Okay. So, this is the Ratio Equity and Leasing Commission meeting on September fourteenth. And call us meeting to order at five thirty-four. Okay, so we will start with roll call. We'll start with the individuals online. Commissioner Wessel, let's start with you, and then we'll go to Darlene, then Verona, Julia, and then that would be the order.
Right, Jason Wessel, uh, purposing the rights commission, uh, present.
Darlene McDonald, present.
Go in Summerfield, present.
Verona Melna, present.
Coach, did you wanna introduce yourself really quickly? Or just say your name for the record?
Oh, my name is Olasal Solovy. You guys hear me?
Yes.
My name is Olasal Solovy, uh. I coach at West High, thank you.
Okay, go West High. We also have Jason O'Brody online to conduct our OPMA training. So we'll go around the room. So, me, Equity Manager, Salt Lake City Mayor's office.
Uh, Steve Andrew, Commissioner, present.
Mike Brown, Chief, Chief of Police, Salt Lake City.
Julia Valarama. Uh, yes, India, Blighton.
Erica, Salt Lake City.
The Full Cell is our, um.
Daisy and Joy, Chief Equity Officer.
Did you want me to introduce myself then?
Oh, yeah, thank you.
How dance the Cantor and Reserve from the League of Women Warriors.
Yay!
Katie Duranty, Commissioner.
Jennifer Newell, Visitor, Senior Advisor for the Precision to the Mayor.
Okay, so we'll move along with our agenda. So first, we have open dialogue. Um, during this portion of the meeting, commissioners may raise topics and discuss current events that may impact or influence the commission's overall work, discussions, and deliberations to provide recommendations to the Marion City Council regarding the Salt Lake City Police Department's policies, budget, and culture. No action will be taken during this section of the meeting. Matters discussed during this section of the meeting may be scheduled um, on a subsequent agenda for follow-up. So, does any of the commissioners have anything to raise, any topics regarding SLCPD?
Um, could, uh, Chief give us some information on that, uh, big, uh, gang bust that happened last week? I think it was tied to some of the, uh, long-term ongoing violence.
Which one, Jason?
So, Market Street one?
Um, uh, the media coverage of it was, uh, the gang unit did a large bust that, uh, a lot of THC cartridges, and they tied it back to a lot of the gun violence that's been happening in Salt Lake City over the last several months. So I'd just like to get more information on that if you have it handy.
Yeah, I can, I can give a little bit. Um, that came after months and months of investigation. There was some really good, um, uh, police group investigative work. Um, they were able to serve multiple search warrants. They were able to seize three hundred and fifty thousand dollars worth of THC cartridges, illegal THC cartridges, thirty thousand dollars worth of, uh, cash. There was, I believe, eight people arrested and several handguns and a rifle seized as well. So, we were able to tie that back to, I think, at least fifteen shootings, uh, that this group was involved with, so. Um, that was great police work on many fronts, uh, very collaborative with a lot of different, uh, agencies working together, uh, and I'm hopefully that, uh, that will bring some of the violent crime and some of the drive-by shootings and the things that we've been seeing to a screeching halt because, uh, those people were, uh, playing a very dangerous game within our communities.
Was it four, fourteen and adult that were arrested?
Um, I think there was one juvenile.
That's not juvenile?
Yeah, and the rest were.
The rest were, yeah.
Yeah.
That was really good police work. To find out much, the street value of three hundred and fifty thousand dollars, that's, that's a syndicate type of arrest.
With something that large or there are a lot of out-of-state connections, it seems getting that kind of, uh, you know, illicit materials into the state is a larger operation than just, you know, a few teenagers in Salt Lake Valley.
Yeah. Jason, I, I would, I would, uh, I don't have firsthand knowledge of that, but, uh, at that level of seizures, uh, I would dare bet that that's multi-state regional type drug distribution.
Okay, we have Commissioner McDonald.
Thank you.
Commissioner McDonald, you can go ahead with your.
Thank you. Yes, um, I just have a question. I've been looking at the agenda for an e- an email for information regarding the training that was gonna happen, the history training. I haven't seen anything. Can you give any information on that?
So they will provide an update on that in just a, in just a second. So right on their, um, section, segment of the agenda, they will discuss that.
Okay. Thank you.
Do we have any other items or points of discussion for open dialogue? Okay, so we'll move into public comment. Did you have anything to say now? Yes, Nancy observes from the League of Women Warriors, so she'll be here with us at every minute. Okay. We are going to move into approving and adopting the June twenty-twenty-three minutes. So, is there a motion on the floor to approve and adopt the minutes? So. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, just raise your hand at, or virtual hands. Thank you, commissioners. And I do want to recognize, um, Commissioner Masi Sati, who has joined us, as well as Commissioner Luna Banurie, welcome. Commissioner Summerfield, you have your hand raised.
I was just approving the minutes and it just stuck. I don't know how to, like, lower it.
I got you. Thank you. Okay. Okay, we will move on to um, the, the SLCPD chief update, so I will pull that up off the screen now.
Well, thank you. It's good to be with you all. Um, as soon as that gets up here, we would like to, to review where we're at with, uh, the very topic that Commissioner McDonald wanted to talk about is the training that has been on our agenda. We've been working on it for the very first place. Sir. So, Andrew has kinda taken that over from Captain Evan Reyes, and so he'll give us an update, and I have a couple things at the end I'd like to talk to you about.
Absolutely. Thanks, Chief. Um, so, we were really excited to be able to push this out this fall. Unfortunately, our Tri-ness River training is already done, and we have been able to get the approvals in place needed to do it now. Um, so we're more than likely looking towards Jan- January of twenty-twenty-four before we can actually push any training out to our officers. Um, what we ran into when we approached purchasing to get the approval for these trainings, the money was already uncovered, but the money isn't able to be moved without, uh, city council approval, and they need purchasing's approval to be able to do that. Um, purchasing did not receive a true RFP in, in their terms. The, the ordinance for RFP was not met when Captain Zay had sent it out to all of the community to present these trainings. So, in trying to get around that, um, if you recall, there were four separate trainings that we proposed and that the commission approved. One was the video, um, from Chief Hawn for History of Policing and Working with Communities, Mistrust and Law Enforcement in Communities. Uh, the other one was from Legal Equity Advocates, which was our HPI, our, uh, civic empowerment community. True Empowering, which was our African-American community, and then Equality Utah, which was our, uh, two B T Q plus community. Um, because two of those, the, uh, Chief Hawn's History of Policing and Equality Utah, where a ten thousand dollar threshold or below that, purchasing isn't able to look at doing a waiver. So we can approve those and be moving forward with those two trainings. For the two that are above that, which was Legal Equity Advocates at around the seventy-four thousand dollar range, and then True Empowering at hundred forty-eight thousand, they are required in us to go back through the RFP process. Um, to see if there's other submittals that are comparable to those numbers before we can proceed with those two trainings. Um, so the plan for the department moving forward is, um, Chief Hawn is going to begin producing his video for the officers, so that we can play those at training. It's a one-hour video, again, for the history of policing. Um, so we'll play that. Planning to do that in January twenty-twenty-four, one hour for all of our officers. And then Equality Utah, who's already submitted a contract to the department, um, since purchasing is willing to waive the RFP for them as well, we'll look forward with getting them to do the one-hour training, twenty sessions, um, for all, each of our officers, again, in January twenty-twenty-four. Did I miss anything, Commissioner, as far as the RFP process?
Uh, you can leave.
So, we realized this was a pretty big error. I came into the process pretty late and wasn't aware that there wasn't a true RFP submitted. Um, when Captain Zay began the process, and I don't know if she knew that she needed to include financing and purchasing at the time. Um, but unfortunately, we have to go back through the process at this time to be able to clear all that up and meet, uh, ordinance regulations.
I don't, I don't know that she did, because I think that was one of the.
Yeah, there was a little bit of confusion as to who later filed that RFP.
Yeah, I don't think that we went through an RFP with, with Chief Hawn. I think it was, you know, we discussed and approved.
Right.
That's what I'm saying. So I don't think that's, that's, it's.
No, but yeah. I don't think she knew at the time there was a new, uh, person coming to purchasing.
He didn't know.
Exactly. So, we're, we're still learning, but we are moving forward with the trainings. We wanna be able to push those out to our officers. We're all very excited. Again, Equality Utah's very excited. True Empowering and Legal Equity Advocates are still excited to move forward in the new RFP process going forward, so we're gonna keep them in that and then just send out another RFP for anybody else who'd like to submit. Are there any questions about trainings?
Yes. So, the previous slide, um, yes, um, right here, we said, with the development of the video, we will approach the commission on if the in-person trainings with Chief Hawn will be needed or if the video is sufficient. Um, you already know what I'm gonna say on that. It absolutely. It should be in person, but I will wait until that time, I guess.
Yeah, a- absolutely. Um, with it is, the in-person would be that additional cost, so we would need to again, approach through the RFP process to get that approved. Um, they're willing to approve the video at the nine thousand dollar level, but anything above that, we would have to submit through our RFP.
Yeah, I think in, in Commissioner McDonald, I believe that twenty-four thousand was to come into town and teach the new recruit academies in person. It would be much more impactful.
Yeah.
I appreciate that we've caught this error and correcting it, so we think you are new billers to do progress. So, thank, thanks for running that through the red chat.
Okay, next slide, Michelle. Next slide. All right, in true fashion, Police Department of Los Angeles Academy, E C R T. That would be the Police Civilian Response Team. Now, this goes back to the very first days when Commissioner Nipoll Salazar Hall, Steve, Commissioner Andrew Warden, Commissioner McDonald, we started talking about not every call that we go on needs a gun and a badge, right? Not every time. So, it was suggested, suggested that we would start looking for a diversified response model. So, the commission uh, gave us approval to hire ten civilians that don't carry a gun or a badge, that actually take low level of crimes, calls for service, and so we appointed Lieutenant, um, Mason Givens, and he, he spoke many times to the group. He took over that task, and he put together a very good ten-person team, very diversified team. And they went through a lot of training, because they're really going out on the street and taking calls. They started in April of this year, and in that time they have gone to sixteen hundred and fifty-eight calls for service. That's sixteen hundred and fifty-eight calls that police officers didn't have to go to. They are doing fantastic work, and so we have been authorized to hire another six. We've got them in the hiring process, and we'll start their academy. But shortly, I'm hoping by the end of the year, we'll have an eighteen-person team, Police Civilian Response, uh, team that goes out and helps our, our officers. Now, they have, they have done nine-one-one hang-up calls, property retrieval, traffic hazards, when we had the floods up in, uh, Sugar House. They came out on that, held a lot of traffic close for twenty-four hours. I think they even caught a bank robber. Right, Andy?
Yes.
They did. So. They are doing fantastic work, so I wanna give props to the commission for your forward thinking and ability, giving us the ability to to kinda diversify our response model. And here's where, you know, because at first, and, and Steve can attest to this, the two things that police officers hate are the way things are and change, right? So, there was always, it was like skepticism. Would, would police officers really embrace these teams, and would it be a good thing for us? And I went to, me and Andy went to the lineup the other day, and, uh, then one of the topics was, hey, Chief, when are we gonna get more Police Civilian Response officers? They're fantastic. We, uh, they helped us out greatly. So, uh, they are seeing the value. They're wanting that. So, I'm giving props to the commission for your forward thinking, for your approval and support of us doing that. And I just want you to know, it's a pain to do it. It's, it's, it's a great program. We intend to, to build it, and it's gonna be, I think, a great asset for our department many, many years to come. Props to you. We also did a PSA for Speak Up Against Hate. I think J.J. Gibson came and spoke to everybody. We went and filmed that, so that is being done, and hopefully we'll see that soon. That's all I had for the night. Unless you guys have any questions for me.
With that filmed, that is done, uh, what will come out of that as far as that gentleman that did come and speak? She was proud to share this stuff. Um, I, I don't know if he had a plan for that video or is it, is it gonna be shown? Do you guys know?
Yeah, it's gonna be, it's gonna be a public service announcement in different lengths, but it'll, you'll start seeing it on different TVs and channels. But they, you've seen them where everybody talks through a script, and then they break it up and different people are saying different words. It's, it's gonna be like that. I went up and filmed my part. They were trying to get the mayor and other, uh, committee leaders to be involved in that. So, the actual script and the language and the message was really, really. Anything else? You guys are easy to read. What's going on?
Scouting our weekend, probably.
All right, well, thank you again, and, uh, we'll see you next month.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, so we will move on to.
So is Jake, Jake, Jake making that, the survey, or is just?
He, he's just helping us.
Helping, yes.
His foundation, the Jewish Federation, putting together the PSA.
Mike Zuland, somebody, yes.
He's retired from. Being in position.
I think so, yeah.
Yeah.
He's still very active, though.
Yes, he is. He's very busy, though. Know about that? Okay, so, Jason, I'm gonna give you the floor to conduct the OPMA training.
Hello, everyone. Can you hear me okay? Can you hear me all right?
Okay, yeah, that's better. I'll make your calls just if you need anything, but.
Okay, sounds good. I, I think I'm in a pretty good spot. Um, I apologize. I can't seem to get my video to work tonight. So, I will have to be doing it without the video feed. But for, uh, for everyone who's done Open Meetings Law Training before, this is something that we need to do once a year. Uh, it's one of the state mandated training processes. The basic principle we're gonna be talking about tonight is that committee meetings need to be open to the public unless there's a narrow exception or reason for closing the meeting. Uh, as, as far as the definitions go, the meeting is a convening of at least a quorum of the committee members for the purpose of discussing, receiving comments from the public about or acting upon a matter over which the committee has jurisdiction or advisory power. So if you have a chance meeting or a social gathering where you're not doing the work of the committee, that wouldn't be subject to the Open Meetings Law. But you have to be careful that you don't use those types of situations to get around the intent of the law or the spirit of the law, which is that we want our public, uh, bodies and our public doings to be transparent and available to the public. So, with regard to, to notice of the meetings that we hold, we need to give at least twenty-four hours' notice of public meetings. Uh, the notice needs to include the agenda, the date, the time, and the place of the meeting. And the notice needs to be posted at the principal office of the committee and also posted on the Utah Public Notice website. Uh, we're also encouraged to use and develop additional means of providing those, notice to the meetings if those will reach more individuals or more people. With regard to the agendas that we post, really what we're trying to do is we're trying to get something that is specific enough that the public will understand the topics that are going to be considered at the meeting, and if they are interested in participating, they need to know enough that, to know that it's something that they want to be present to listen to or comment about. Now, if there's something that is not on the agenda that a member of the public brings up, the chair of the committee does have the option of allowing that particular topic to be discussed, but no action can be taken on that subject until it's been noticed on a, on a future meeting agenda. If something is not noticed on the agenda, we can't take any action about it. So the, typically what we're doing, the general purpose is that we are trying to keep meetings open, but there are some reasons why a meeting may need to be closed. Some of these purposes are to discuss the character, professional competence, or physical or mental health of an individual, uh, strategy sessions to discuss collective bargaining or the purchase of property. Uh, we also have situations where we're discussing the deployment of security personnel, devices, or systems or investigative proceedings regarding allegations of misconduct. Any of these reasons are, are solid reasons for closing the meeting. There's also a catch-all if you need to receive advice from legal counsel. So, if there's a situation where you need advice from the city attorney's office, we can close it for that as well. If we need to close a meeting, we, we start with an open meeting, and we have at least two-thirds of the committee members who are present need to vote to close the meeting. Uh, when the meeting is closed, the following information is publicly announced and entered on the minutes, the reasons for closing the meeting, the location of the meeting, and the vote by name of each committee, committee member, and whether they voted either for or against the motion to close the meeting. Now, if we do have a closed meeting, we don't need to take written minutes, but we will keep a recording of the meeting so that, uh, if there's ever any question about what was discussed, we can provide that recording to a judge, and they can make a determination as to whether the meetings was properly closed and the topics that were discussed were appropriate. We do have an exception, I believe, for, uh, security personnel, devices, or systems or the character and professional competence of an individual. For those two items, we don't need to keep a recording, but the chair needs to certify and sign a, a declaration that those were the only things discussed in the meeting. So with regard to records in open meetings, we keep both the written minutes and the recording of the meeting. Uh, and unless we have those, those minutes and the recording taking place, we can't do any particular work or take a vote or do something that would uh, result in a, a decision in the meeting. If we are going on a site visit or something similar to that, the committee can keep either written minutes or a recording, but unless both are being kept, we can't take any act, action on an item. So with regard to the approval of minutes, within three business days after holding the meeting, the committee needs to make the audio recording of the me, of the meeting available to the public. Within what they, what is called a reasonable time after holding the open meeting, we have to make the pending minutes available, and within three days after approving the written minutes, the committee needs to make the, the approved minutes available to the public. Excuse me. My throat's a little dry. So, with regard to electronic meetings, which is something that we do frequently now after COVID, we need to have a resolution rule or ordinance in place that allows the use of electronic meetings, and I believe we do have that in place. We do have an anchor location, uh, it's established currently at the City and County Building, which, uh, provides an opportunity for interested persons to meet and attend the meeting at that location. Um, excuse me. And with regard to the electronic meetings as well, we have, we provide notice that the meeting is going to have an electronic component, and if there's contact information or ways to connect, we would provide that as well. Uh, ju- just a few words about electronic messages or text messages. The Open and Public Meetings Act does not restrict a committee member from sending text messages like emails, instant messaging, or other things to other committee members when the committee is not convened in an open meeting. But you should be aware that if you send text or other electronic communications to committee members, that those could be, uh, records that would need to be disclosed pursuant to a grandma request. So if, uh, someone sends a grandma request in asking for text messages that committee members sent during the meeting, those would be grant records that would need to be produced. Uh, the act also, with regard to if there's a disruption of the meeting, the act doesn't prohibit the removal of the disruptive influence from the meeting. So if someone is genuinely disruptive, we can ask them or we can remove them from the meeting. The last few things, uh, consequences of violating Open and Public Meetings Law records. Any final action that's taken in violation of the, of provisions of the act could be voided by the court. There's only a thirty-day window in which to contest or protest the, the Open and Public Meetings Law violations that may have taken place. So if nothing's filed within ninety days, uh, the, the, uh, possibility of voiding those actions goes away. Now, also, if you are a committee member and you knowingly and intentionally violate or advise a violation of the uh, Open and Public Meetings Act, you could be held guilty of a class B misdemeanor. So we'd strongly encourage everyone to, to avoid, you know, anything where you are knowingly and, and intentionally doing something contrary to the act. That's everything I've got with regard to the training tonight. Uh, I'm happy to answer questions if there are any, but I appreciate your time and listening through it. I know the presentation can be a. listening through it. I know the presentation can be a little dry, particularly when it's over electronic means. All right, I appreciate your time tonight. Thanks so much for listening and being part of this.
Thank you, Jason.
Thank you, Jason.
Steve, we are moving right along. We will have our update on school safety and the MOU that recently got approved. So we'll have Jennifer Yaw, our senior advisor for education.
Hi, thanks for having me. My computer froze right before this and I'm so sorry that I don't have the. I didn't have the PowerPoint early, but I thought I could at least have it on time. So it's kind of cute. I'll send it later. But thanks for having me. I'm excited to be here and I just realized that Steve sent me during the meeting a picture of our new rescue dog in a life jacket. So I don't know if that's gonna be granted or whatever, but you're guilty. That's the funniest thing. In a life jacket. Anyway, thank you for having me. I'm really excited to be here. I'm actually really feeling positive about the changes in the MOU and about the trajectory of this partnership. There's a few things that I want to point out.
Do you want me to pull it up?
No, I'm just thinking you might want to send that to them because this is a copy. This is like the driest thing you could ever want. Like, here's a copy of the MOU. I'm sitting kind of far away because I'm just getting over a cold, but I didn't sneeze on it.
I'll just show it off of, I'll just show it so they have.
You want, that's good, but you're welcome to to send it to them as well.
I was editing that to everyone.
Thank you.
But I will show it.
And it's, we in the safety committee, we kind of looked over this together. It is, it is, it's still a dried document. I tried, but it's a. But one of the, one of the slides I have is the process of updating the MOU, which is 16 months of building and understanding, gathering input, negotiating meetings, tackling legal language, revising, clarifying, sharing, revising, compromising, revising, getting school board approval and signing. And then it was approved, as we talked about earlier. But I was, it might be the first time having done a document, you know, working on a document like this and being not a legal person at all. The the language was actually really difficult. And then also the compromising, like, I'm like, oh, we, this was such a great idea. And then the district was like, no, we want to do it like this. But I feel like overall, it feels really good. I think two, the two main C rep recommendations for the MOU updates were to build in a stronger community input and engagement component to the partnership. There was already something written in there about the regular, I think it's about in the joint responsibility section, about the regular regularly meeting with community members to get feedback about SROs and how it's going and, you know, specifically hearing from families and parents and guardians. So what I wrote in there was that this would happen from 10 to a year and that got mixed. But also what I'm finding out is that to tackle something like that is not something that I think this school district is very good at. And so I'm also committed to working with them to to find a way to create different forums in different parts of the of the district and community centers, et cetera, to really bring together groups of people and SROs to kind of talk about how is this going, how's it working, et cetera. So it's still included in that, but it's not included as it's going to happen three times a year, which we were hoping for. But it's, it is still in there and I'm committed to supporting them and actually even taking a lead in some ways to make that work. The other piece is to incorporate a comprehensive multifaceted data collection based on research-based methods for the purpose of improving practice and assessing program effectiveness. So I feel like we did really well on this one. So the. There's always going to be an interesting separation between what is the business of the city and what is the business of the district in terms of data. However, we have the development of the of an ad hoc committee, which is new this year. There's always been a steering committee which basically looked at data. But the ad hoc committee, and if you want to see, these don't have page numbers, but if you want to look at number 14, there's a whole section on the ad hoc committee. And the bottom line is, this is a committee of three people from the city, three from PD and three from the school district that will in effect, do an analysis of the data that we're that we're looking at and what our goals are. And if the data we're looking at is the right data. So that could even, just talking to Rachel Otto, that could actually even lead to hiring somebody from outside to come in and do an analysis of of the partnership and the data and and to make sure that what we're, what we're actually doing and what we're measuring are related to what we want for our outcomes. So that's kind of an exciting piece. It's just a one-time, 23, 24 this year to have that group take a really close kind of microscopic look almost as well as a broader look at the data requesting and making recommendations to the mayor and the chief and the superintendent about what we should be looking at to reach our goals. So I'm, I'm actually really excited about that, that piece there. So that is really going to allow us, especially if we have a broad committee and we, again, I just think historically, it's been mainly run by the school district, which is, can end up being sort of myopic. So this this broader piece of making sure that we have members from kind of all three agencies working on this and kind of deciding what the important things are and also with the ability to go to outside experts to do want to hire an analysis of of the program itself, just to see, to kind of see that general direction. And then they will make, that committee will then make recommendations that will then impact. That hopefully the recommendations are, will be sound and will be taken by the mayor and the superintendent and the chief of police. And then those will be incorporated into what the oversight committee will be looking at and reporting on every year, if that makes sense. So that's a big, those are, I think, the two main things that you all as a community were asking for. One thing I think that's been really good in, is the incorporation of ongoing research-based training and professional development. So, you know what? Close this. Because it's hot on my head, but now since I'm on the live stream side, they're, okay. So what what I had recognized early on or that was happening was there was kind of a one and done with the training. It's a, so this the school district is overseeing the training with school resource officers and administrators that was required every fall based on law. And those are basically the things that the law said, oh, we want to make sure that they understand all these pieces. But that isn't a training about the actual underpinnings and how to be an SRO and how to be an administrator in a school with an SRO. And so it took me a long time to tease that out and that's the problem. So for some officers besides kind of some informal training, that was the only training that they were getting. This is my understanding. And so what this is allowing is when I talk to the district about the research-based piece, just doing a one and done for anything is not a good idea. So with incorporated two or three more informal training sessions throughout the district with administrators and SROs to problem solve, to talk about how things are going to learn from each other. And those actually, I think are going to be rather than, yeah, those will be at administrator meetings. So before it was really hard to get people together. So I'm working with my liaison at the school district, Dr. Hassan Taylor, who is in charge of all the those weekly meetings with administrators. So it's like, work it in. So I think that's really encouraging and those are, that's where we can build in some of the pieces that I felt like were missing from the training. I also recognize after going to the, in July, going to this National Association for School Resource Officers Conference in Indianapolis, along with Mindy Hohndal from Salt Lake City School District. And that was when we tried to get SROs to go, it just didn't work out. And I think they did, they did try to get somebody there, but there was a real recognition. There's a, there's a week-long training that NASRA, there's some other school-based law enforcement agencies that do the same kinds of things. It's a week-long, five-day, this is how you do it. This is how you be an SRO. So to Sergeant Tierling's credit, I know that we've had officers come in mid-year, he'll sometimes send them to a five-day or a two-day training because NASRA does do some of that training locally. They do one every, every, I think, August and August. At any rate, it became very clear, and this is what I discussed with the safety committee, about this idea of leading as the capital city and as us really wanting to be at the forefront for a lot of reasons, right? We want to do this right. But to have a pretty high standard for the training for school resource officers. So whether it be through, through NASRO in that week-long training or another agency, but not just to do it in-house, but to, in addition to that, to the professional development that we'll be having between the districts, you know, kind of those more conversation pieces and the fall piece that really talks about Utah law specifically and some and some more federal laws, but specifically Utah laws. And the bottom line, setting that standard for having, making sure that every school resource officer goes through this training. And to be honest, I'm not sure if it should be yearly or we would say you should do that every other year. That's something you're going to have to look into a little bit more, but I feel like there's, there's unsure standard for what it would look like. How often should you get this training or how often should it be repeated? But there's so many other opportunities with school-based law enforcement agencies. There's, or I don't know, organizations, other opportunities for taking classes, workshops, seminars about threat assessments, which they want SROs to be involved in, or relationship building, or school safety, or SEP TED. So kind of in short, I think it might be like kind of what I'm, what I'm recommending is that we kind of move the status of the school resource officer to a specialty status, which is considered a specialty. But if you ask around, it doesn't really have the highest status if you, you know, when one, one police officer is talking to another. But to support building that, but also treat it as the professional specialty that it is and have a minimum level of training. You know, provide opportunities or even a minimal level of ongoing professional development. So maybe you did the training last year, this year you may have X amount of hours that are specific to issues related to SROs. So let me just double check on my. Are there questions?
Questions. I mean, I know we're hoping this will be a little more user-friendly. It's a little bit more, but it's still.
Oh, the the document itself is my, is it like my presentation? Yes, also. I don't even have my PowerPoint. No. Yeah.
It's how administrators, teachers, SROs are doing it. They're not law trained.
No.
And this is written really, if it was written by lawyers.
Yes, and I worked a lot on trying to get it a little better, have things make sense. And then I'm still recognizing like, oh, I moved that to a section where I thought it made sense and it's been moved somewhere else. So I'm even having a hard time finding things in here. There's still that goal. It's not unattainable, I don't think, to a crosswalk or some kind of a document that says, or even something to help you find what you need. I have to say that I was with a colleague from Salt Lake District who was an assistant principal at Hillside for years and he said he had, it's funny because we heard of so many administrators are like, oh, they shared the MOU. I've never even seen it. They, and it, and they have shared it, but probably not widely enough. But he said he carried a copy of the MOU everywhere he went.
I'm wondering if we should create like a cheat sheet.
That's exactly, yeah.
Administrators cheat sheet for SROs.
Yes.
Teachers, ones that are more to go, what can SRO do, what can?
I think that's a great idea. And again, I feel like Sergeant Tierling, I think, has ongoing informal conversations with his, with the, with the school resource officers. And they may even have a cheat sheet. I actually, this is on record, but I actually heard tell that there might be one that supports the, the school resource officers and.
That decides back to handle you in case anyone gets.
Yes, yeah, yeah.
Where is that handling you?
Yes, exactly. Because one of the goal, oh, go ahead.
Yeah, and one of the issues that we, that I remember we had was SROs can be testing, well, we can't trespass a kid from, we can't cite a kid who's from, you know, there's a kid at Hillside, but they're really, they really should be a thing.
Right.
We can't trespass them or we can't break the law at school. We just can't.
Right.
Absolutely can't. Like, that is a crime.
And I feel like that's why those conversations. So again, I think they're working, like, basically our SROs are kind of working in isolation at their schools. And so there might be amazing stuff happening over here and really not so amazing stuff happening here, but there's not these conversations. So to bring them together like, oh, you and I are even in a fight. Yeah, blah, blah, blah. This is fine.
You're not giving you, right?
And I have to say that I was pretty impressed too with the angle. I, I went in, even though I, I'm a law enforcement school, but I went into the NASRA conference going, oh, I'm a little worried about what this is gonna, like, what this is gonna be about. And there was so much good stuff in there.
Yeah.
Just about building relationships and the importance from the relationship between the school resource officer and the administrators and how to connect with kids. And one of the best pieces I heard in there, which was like, this is what we need to be talking about, is that one of the officers who was formerly a kind of a beat cop said, you know, when you're, when you're sitting there and you're taking like 20 minutes and talking to a citizen about, you know, the ticket you just wrote him and, and they're like, what do you call that? And they're like, yeah, that's called milking it. It's like, yes, guess what? You got to get rid of that idea because that's what you need to be doing with kids in, in schools. You need to be building those relationships. You need to be talking to them. And so I think there's so many mentality shifts where, again, the well-meaning district is saying, hey, you know, this is what it looks like, but to have people come in that have done it, have done the work, have studied it, to say, here's the difference between what you used to be doing and what you're doing now. And people that are really, you know, doing exceptional work in their field, I think it's super important for for other SROs to to hear. So it was, it was a great, it was a really good conference. So we even talked about, like, Mindy Hohndal and I talked about, how could we get, you know, a group of SROs coming every year and treat, like, really have, have them treated like professionals and come to some of these conferences?
Yeah.
Are there any other questions or?
I was wondering if we posed that question to Chief, how he would approach that.
Um, the, the, SRO, the school-based law, the week-long training?
Yeah, or just what you mentioned, how are they perceived or how, you know, how they could be seen as a more professional.
Yeah.
Rather than just alone and.
Yeah. And you know, it's interesting because people said, can we pay them more? That's, you just, I mean, I've had a lot of conferences and we, we obviously can't do that and make this kind of that, we just get into a whole lot, a whole lot of issues. They're being paid the same. It's anytime they transfer in, it's a lateral transfer. So it's more, it's a little bit more about kind of that, the status. And I think just by the nature of it, are you going to work with kids? You're going to go work with kids instead of, you know, driving around the street, writing tickets or whatever, not writing tickets, but, you know. My happiness is in stereotypes, I'm sorry, but, but it's not, it's, it's really some people's, it's just their wheelhouse and they're really good at it. But it doesn't end up being kind of social, it doesn't have a lot of social capital, but in terms of how do you build in advantages? One suggestion I have, which we could also talk about, is when we do have the numbers that some, some, some officers that would probably be very good or would be interested don't want the five-day schedule because the normal schedule is for a four-day-a-week schedule. And so a lot of them are like, I don't want to be, I don't want to be, you know, I don't want to work five days a week. So if we got creative and then if we had the, if we had the human power to do it, you could basically say, well, let's have you work four weeks and work longer days, which would mean you could be there before school and you could be more involved in after-school meetings or or confront family, you know, parent conferences or PTA meetings. If you only worked four days and have, have been overlapped, you might have one, have one or two rovers that, you know, took one school on every Wednesday or every Friday, but they were in it long enough to kind of get to know kids. Or we have some SROs that, you know, are not being SROs anymore, but they'll take a shift for overtime because they really liked that they moved on to do other things. So that's something down the line that we could consider too, is how can we, what are the barriers to people that would really be good at this that want to do it? What are some barriers that are in place that we might be able to remove or at least lessen to get them to to sign on? So they won't, as you might know, they won't resign SROs. They really, they will invite people to apply if they really want to make sure that they're they're the right fit, which I think is probably a good thing.
So is that where school, where the school resource office, that's what?
No, they have, yeah, and we're very underfunded right now. They're supposed to be at nine or 10, yeah. Actually, another thing, thanks for saying that though, because we're supposed to be at nine or 10. I think there's five or six right now. Just because of the shortage, but I think we're moving in a good direction and that hopefully in the next few months we'll have, we will be up to at least nine. But I can't make any guarantees or anything. The other thing that was, oh, go ahead.
To recover more than one school then.
Yes, ideally they would have, if you, I talked to Sergeant Tierling. Yes, ideally they would have, um, if you, I talked to Sergeant Tierling who's over the SROs. If he would ideally want two, two at every high school just for safety reasons, um, but that's not possible right now. Right now, um, if you look at the MOU and the purpose of, like, the real purpose of this kind of a partnership, it really is to build relationships, be another trusted adult, be involved in kids' lives. With the numbers where they are now, they're doing a little bit more kind of triage and moving around a lot to different schools. You know, oh, we need somebody at Highland, there's, there's somebody there today, or this middle school needs somebody, so they leave their post at Highland. So it's a little bit harder to build relationships to feel like they're part of the school or to be on, you know, discipline committees or, you know, it's, it's harder to be involved right now. Um, but we have said that when the numbers are high, that we really do want them to be, even though they'll be assigned to high schools and middle schools, that SROs need to be, have an awareness of the elementary schools that they're serving. And I would love to see eventually have them, you know, hey, a half hour a week, you go to this elementary and go play basketball with the kids at lunch or go open lunch, milk boxes for the kindergarteners or field oranges or just to be there, not with any responsibility, but just to build those relationships. Um, but we're not there yet, but that's one, that's another recommendation where just at elementary schools, I mean, just at middle and high schools, clearly we wanna be careful about elementary, but we do wanna start those relationships. And if you see the SRO that came to your elementary and what do you know, who's at your middle school, there's a connection, there's a connection with somebody, so.
So what is the training before they come to this position? And what kind of background do they have? You're doing special training with them.
So, well, I personally not. And actually, our.
Well, somebody is, right.
Pardon me?
Somebody's gonna be doing training.
The, the training for just to be an officer, yeah, they don't have any specialty training necessarily to be a school resource officer, except for to be a police officer. So they go through the regular post? Is that what it's called?
Yeah, it's for me and.
Yeah.
Yeah, and there, and there are opportunities for specific training for school resource officers. I think what you're talking about is, is beefing that up and having people in systematic and systemic so that it really professionalizes the position. So we have our officers working with some of our most vulnerable members of our society in schools. We want them to be experts and I think you're talking about.
Yes.
And that, that's in the trainings that we want to get started, that's dealing specifically with child development, adolescent development, Aces, you're the adverse child defense. Uh, because a lot of life is traditionally been seen as criminal behavior of a child is when they act and they're traumatic. It's very exciting, there's spirits in their life and we don't want to criminalize that from the truth. So that's some of the additional training that we, that this group was wanting to get in place for the SROs specifically and make sure that the SROs are, were not just to, to investigate homicide or the community, you know, specific people who are, it's not criminalizing them to help them build a relationship.
And they'll be some of the resources.
Right, okay, yeah. Unfortunately, the law, the, the Utah law right now has a lot of bad uses and it, I don't know if the bias is still in there, but there's.
Bias is not.
But they still did it.
But a lot of what's at the bottom, we wanted to improve and some of it, that was a lot of help to get that back. Some of what she wanted was improvement, but what we wanted to do was improve what she originally wanted, how to structure it and put it in those two, um, so it's awesome.
And I, and I do think Salt Lake City does tend, the district itself tends to be more equity-minded and more proactive though of districts than you do. So they, they recognize the need for the anti-bias and, um, and that student, the student services department too does have some great work with, with the Aces and, you know, trauma-informed practices. And so they do, it's still not very wrong. Like even at its longest, this year it was a half a day because we're gonna incorporate other personal trainings, but even historically, it was just, it was one day and it was a long day.
It is a long day and that Aces training is, it's actually, I mean, it could be, it could be a seven hour, probably one time a month, but I think, but the offenders, the family of the offender, the D Gs, or I think it's just, it's like maybe two hours, three minutes of it.
Yep.
So it's usually like a workshop and a picture that's, you know. It's still very helpful to realize how, a one piece that's missing from a child can really unravel a kid's life.
Right, and how, and how the adult inner interacting with that child, having that understanding and that knowledge can be such a big, just taking a step back, like, oh, I think I understand why this is happening.
Exactly. If you did the, the straw, straw training, we had a little, the, the thing with straws and there's some other people else.
Oh, wow.
And this is a really cool, actually, training system.
Um, one other change and that actually relates to what you were just saying is that it's not a huge change, but one recommendation is that because, is you don't want like first or sixth, you know, cops at the very beginning of their career to be, to be in these positions because like they're kind of reverent to go, like it's, and so to have them, put them in a school, they may, they sometimes may overreact to issues that are happening, et cetera. So, um, there is an exception, an exception now. However, there is one guy who is apparently, he used to work in a school and then, but so he's, I think he's at West High now, but, um, it's, it's changed a little. It said, this is the recommendation and it, you know, there will be, there may be exceptions. So I'm kind of.
Like a more social worker?
Yeah.
Because that's the police officer, right?
Right, yes.
Exactly.
Like, yes, yes, we'll make an exception for you, yeah.
Yeah.
So.
I would like to say, if you don't mind, in previous conversations, School Safety Committee and the Chief, right? Um, I know that he takes the position seriously and he also wants to make sure it's as professional as possible. And some of the issues that Jennifer brought up make it, it challenging to prove for that position because of the culture of law enforcement. And it's, it's kind of a constant effort to still be able to prove the best hope to be in that position. And I appreciate, as Jennifer already mentioned, that the classic is voluntary. No one gets voluntary to be an SRO because if you're not there with the right attitude, it's not a great assignment for you. So I, I know that the department, I don't wanna speak to the chief, but I know in previous conversations, that, that they're very sensitive to those issues.
Okay, are there any comments from commissioners online? Um, so just one thing, as, um, we're thinking about Jennifer's presentation and I will send it all out to you as well. So the end of year report is gonna be due at our last meeting. We have to vote on an end of year report. So I just wanna remind you all that your role on this commission is very important because if there's any policy recommendations we wanna work towards, we would need that in a formal recommendation, which would be in this end of year report. So with there being two meetings left, quorum is very important. And I know half of you are falling off this year, but I, I really beg at this point for your commitment to this commission and you can all go in peace at the end of your term once it completes. Um, if you have any formal recommendations that you all can think of, please let me know. You can say it here at this meeting because I, I will start the, I will start beginning to draft this up. Um, and our next meeting in October, we will have Wendy Ison come back with Ashley Cleveland and there is some policy work that they are hoping to get done there in terms of culturally responsive therapy. So that will be an important meeting, but like I said, we will vote on all of these official recommendations in our November meeting. So with that being said, is there anything you all can think of? In terms of school safety, the MOU, what you would like to see for school resource officers, um?
One thing.
What's my thing? Would you?
Get it more in place and make sure we have that data gathering placed.
And the training.
Still a good thing, yeah, the training.
Training.
Yeah, the training, the, um, the funding for the data gathering and funding for the SROs.
And I, I think to ask for that cheat sheet that you're asking, or mention of your, yeah, that would be really good.
Yeah, I think we need to get that.
The cheat sheet?
Yeah, cheat sheet's created for, uh, the teachers, administrators, everything. SROs, so once there, because this is not an easy one even to read. I'm, I'm monitoring, it's not easy for me. I start to zone out after a minute and it's what I do.
And with the resources, did that include an emphasis to fill all kinds of positions?
Yeah, filling all the positions and knowing, and we first started, our, our question is, are SROs helpful or are they, or one, are they, you know? There's no data to show whether they're good at that or unusual. So that's, that was one of our big things, which we're planning in place to get that data gathering. That's not fully in place yet, so it's, personally, we won't make sure that's, that it's there, if you can start with that.
In terms of the data gathering, what are you hoping to gather in terms of that?
Well, so we, we're hoping, and I know this is, this is really tricky because we're running into the, to FERPA. And that's, that's one of the trickier ones to deal with. Anytime you don't respect the statute, everyone's, accolades get raised while the praise of incident, everyone goes up in arms. And for good reason, we've got to make sure that those education records are protected. But we do wanna make sure that, that one of our biggest concerns was whether kiddos of color were being targeted unfairly. Because we did receive voices for your children's report for, um, their involvement in delinquency cases of the judicial courts and changes to the statute, the original delinquency statute, resulting in children being even more represented in, um, in, in, so it's, they're being prosecuted more often, which was not what we was hoping with that. That's what I can't, I can't, I can't tell. And so we, what we were curious about, because it wasn't broken down by city, it's broken down by district and there, Salt Lake City's part of the third district, which also consists of some counties in entirety of Salt Lake County, so we really did segregate that data to figure out are the Salt Lake City chain of color being murdered more often, or are they on par with the other white kids? This, you know, it's what we looked in, but Sally, um, Burns, West Burns, after in three, for all of the Salt Lake, um, cities. So our concern was, are SROs keeping some of those kids of, kids of color from an extrajudicial justice system? Or are they contributing to it or are they just kind of unusual? This is positive or negative impact. Um, I know Salt Lake City has been really ahead of the curve in providing this situation data. They've been using those reports since prior to the pandemic, since we need to, we need to reset. Ever since I was on the rights commission, when I first started with the rights commission, that's the first time we, um, produced that report. It's, it's been fantastic. And I mean, some of the data wasn't really disaggregated, a lot of those were functioning by kids. And that data disaggregated, it eventually does, but we know it's why money is raised. Are they helping kids from being transferred to schools because that's equivalent of expulsion? Are they helping kids, um, to be transferred? Are they preventing kids from being suspended or are they applying for suspension? We just, we don't know. It's my, that we heard stories across the world, parents of the SROs horrible to assess R O, segment his life. And so, frankly, we just don't know if it's, it's a good program, bad program, or useful. And not only just, uh, SROs, I think it's also the staff, like you had mentioned, right, training for the staff as well. I think that that's very, which we, yeah. Yeah, I mean, some, some administrators are trying to use SROs to generate school policy. punish kids for having their cell phone in flats, which is a school issue and an ethical issue. So it, it, that, that was our big issue is we, we wanted to figure out what were the SROs' roles in, in these, those lives. So if it's positive, great, let's continue it. If it's negative, let's take it back, figure out a different way of doing this. We shouldn't have, so it's, it's supposed to be based here, basically, social workers. So that was our bigger question is how can we best use these funds? Should it be on SROs? Should we even have SROs at the schools? Should we have a different person there or are they actually really beneficial? And are we gonna, we didn't wanna just say, you know, we're SROs, maybe we're, just be doing a program to support a person for a child. That, that was the data we were trying to think, but it's, it's difficult in talking to Sampons. Sometimes in some schools, you can very easily identify that child just based on demographic data, but that would have been that. Just saying the, the one Pacific Islander kid at the school, there's only three Pacific Islander kids and there's only one in the seventh grade. So we don't know who that is. So it gets, it does get tricky. So we're trying to figure out how do we, how do we do this facilitator and, and the conversations with Sampons about that, about how do we do this? And I thought there's maybe a way that first we have a lot of levels of drop, so you get ready to that done. And I don't know if you can really accomplish that thing, but that's one of the ones that I wanted to see happen, members of this commission want to see that.
Nicole, can you see, do, looking at that as a function of the ad hoc committee that we, that was listed in here or is that different?
No, I, I think that's part of a larger data gathering, um, one of the cooperative collaborative effort between Salt Lake Police and the school district in providing all that data. It would have been like a two-front sort of effort of the SROs within the schools gathering that data. Schools providing that data, which we thought, the schools providing the data isn't really, it is for block. Um, schools for very good reasons would be hesitant to provide any data to the city or to the police department. I can get it, I know, it's not a shirishism, it's, they wanna protect their students and I fully respect that. So, um, hoping that maybe even after collaboration, we can ensure our students are also protected. I think, right, full protection students, I think, quite some of the data, so we can see if SROs, if SRO program is beneficial. So it really was a kind of a two, two-front effort. Okay, so I don't think it was really, it was more of a whole separate thing that would not really involve the ad hoc. But the ad hoc, we would use some of that data and this commission would use some of that data to see what changes we need to have. Definitely.
But, but maybe that could be two recommendations. One is looking at that, that bigger picture, the racial, like, racial ethnic disparities on a more macro level. And also putting emphasis behind the potential funding for a professional researcher to look at the data in Salt Lake City. Um, to see if we're meeting the goals of our, our local SRO.
Right.
Right, so two.
Yes, and, and it really could be that macro of, of this, the school district saying, okay, secure the, not raw numbers, but maybe overall numbers to protect the identities of the children, of students. So, so children of color are divided this, you know, the different ways, like the islander, uh, American, black, and to those sort of categories, they were overrepresented in these areas. And they had this many negative contacts of SROs or this many positive contacts of SROs. Who are more likely to be transferred after having contact with SROs. So something that affects protection, brings identities, sort of that means.
One, we could capture some of that, working with the state, uh, the R E D coordinator of the state. Should have local data on that and then, uh, then two, kind of blocking that, my second idea. We'll come back. Oh, oh, it was, it was the, the effort for equity eligible reports, I think they came and presented to us. And, and maybe between two of those, we could get to some of that information.
I think we can, because the, the cities themselves, that is something that is provided to the general courts when the, when the justice system started for residents. So that can be very easily broken down. It just wasn't, this is actually unfortunate, the, what's collective data, but that information is, is included. I know it's included, they have access to say, and it does, the child's city, so it's like, so they could do it. It's just that they, they are, I think, it's a bit, and they're going to do it, it's a state.
And I'm thinking probation too, is, is I think Carlos was very, was.
Really, and that was something that we've been, it's gonna be a very long in the future, ask. Because it is a lot of agencies trying to go together, that's, that's where some bring cats.
I think we should get it on the wishes.
It's my mental one. Along with the uniform.
I can say one thing about this document. So I, I just, I wanna acknowledge a couple of things. One, um, I've done a little work on these MOUs over the years and they're very difficult to negotiate and they do take a long time. And there's a lot, there's a lot of opinions and attitudes and asks and wants. And as Jennifer articulated, it, it really is a compromise to come together on what, uh, something that all parties agree. And so first off, Jennifer, I thank you for the work that you did to renegotiate this. This was a key priority for this commission to get this document done and it's done. So thank you. And then secondly, Nicole, as the chair of the School Safety Committee, I know you all took it very seriously and put out recommendations representing this board, uh, of what we would want to be in the document. And we got a fair share of that. And we got a fair share of that, and so I, I also wanna acknowledge the board of the commission. Um, I'm pretty excited about this document, and the, uh, Jennifer mentioned. Administrator that carries this document to know what the rule is, the officers do it too. So some of those administrators are asking the officers to do things that they shouldn't be doing. And I don't, I don't wanna paint it as a standoff, but it is, this is the rulebook, and this is why I can't help you with that, but how can we work together on this? And I think it makes a huge difference in the quality of lives of our kids, and contributes to the educational environment, so. Hats off.
I just wanna interject that in that training, that Nazaro conference, someone said, um, one of the SROs that was doing a training said. You know, if you can't support your administrator with something, you better know why. And then you need to have options about, well, I can't do that, but maybe I could help you with this. So I really like that, because I think the issue in the past, the standoffs of it, can't do it.
Right, yeah.
Right, and so I think it's moving towards that, and I don't know how, how prevalent this is anymore, I do, I do see they're, they're progressing really nicely. In these relationships, but I, I think that I really like that idea of, you know what, I can't because of X, Y, Z, like, understanding it and saying. But what if I, you know, what if we did this, and not a workaround, but still do this, but like, but not just, I'm out, but hey, we're a team, so I can't help you with that, but I could.
Right, maybe the reason why little Johnny's on his phone all day is because he's trying, he's just like, you know, what's on the board?
Yeah, yeah.
Like video games on his phone, that's a way of avoiding the embarrassment, and you can navigate that, it's.
Yeah, yeah.
It's rare that a kid is, is evil.
Right, or that they're evil, or that their parents don't care about them, that's, that's a big miss. Do we have any comments from anybody online?
I'm good, thank you.
Yeah, I just wanna thank everybody for the work they put into this, uh. I'm not quite up to speed on it, I've only kind of heard about it tangentially, but, uh, it seems like it's been a years long process, so, uh, congratulations.
Thanks. You think it's two years, I thought you mean three years, yeah.
Two years, but since we started working on it, so it's still, it's still a new born, really, in, in the large scheme of the policy, it can.
Right.
It's like hours of all of that, sort of time, right?
So, okay. So we will, thank you, Jennifer.
Sure, thank you for having me, Jennifer.
Yeah.
And I will, as soon as I get the presentation, I will send that out with the MOU, um, do you think you can get that?
Yeah.
On your computer.
Yes, I couldn't, either, I'd love to just go home and rest, but I could do, I could either get it tonight or tomorrow, is that okay?
Perfect. Okay, so just the rest of our agenda, um. We haven't had subcommittees in a while, um, except for school safety, which did meet last month, um. The mental health and sensory needs subcommittee will be coming back this month, um, just again, that is one of Mary's priorities. We just had to do a little bit of a restructure, um. Of something, so I will be meeting with our A D eight coordinator on that and seeing how we can go, um. And every other subcommittee, so training and policy and practices. I, well, training, it seems like training will have a little bit more work to do, I thought we were gonna be. Kind of done, um, with that in terms of how the training was going, but you all heard, the R P process was not. Um, done to city cold, um, with that, we, we are so hopeful that these trainings will begin, and I'm hoping. Uh, and I believe Lieutenant Club and Sheik had shared that they will start with the trainings that were approved in January of twenty twenty four, so I will. Make sure and follow up that those things are happening, um. And then I will have a draft probably by the October meeting, because I want you all to see visually, like, what things are we hitting on? What things do we still need to work on, um. And we're gonna just have to kind of pivot with what we have, so I am excited that the MOU is done, that's one thing, that took a while, so that is a win for the commission, so that will go on the end of the year report. Um, other than that, the sub, other subcommittees, I just have to reevaluate just kind of what paths we're gonna go on with that. Then. Okay, so we will have a tentative close session, our next meeting will be October twelfth. I ask you kindly, please clear your schedules for this time and be here. Um, I can't trust enough that these last two meetings are very important. In terms of where we're going with the future of this commission, um, and also, as many of you are outgoing, I wanna add this plug in. If you know of somebody from your community that can represent your community well on this commission. Please have them apply, I will include, I will send a follow up email, um, probably by Monday, because I'm being realistic, so by Monday, expect a follow up email of this meeting. I will include the link, um, for the applications to apply, and if you know of. A very, um, revered community member that represents your cultural background, or your just community in general, please have them apply. We will be, um, sending in two applications that came in, but that's pretty much it. There's not many applications in half of your meeting, so if you know of anybody, please tell them about your great time on this commission and. About the work that can still, that is still left to be done. So the next meeting is on October twelfth, and do we have a motion to adjourn?
Yeah.
Okay.
I have.
Oh, okay.
You said that to clear our calendars for the in person meeting, um. But I, I missed the date, that maybe, is that next, the, I think, it would be in October.
Yes, October twelfth, I don't know. Yes, does everyone have the calendar invites, I think the issue is, like, you actually have to accept it, because. This, I, I understand everyone is busy, but I'm like, when I think of the end of the year, I'm like, kinda getting nervous, just because we missed the whole one. Um, of business that could have been conducted, so I just wanna make sure, if it's not on your calendars, let me know. Let me, also let me know, what is the best way to contact you, do you need a call, do you need a text, do you need an email, um.
All the above.
Yes, to, today I was not playing around, I was gonna text you all, like, I have not heard from you, are you coming, I will make sure to do that. Um, but also part of it is making sure that you are available, right, it's hard to come to something if you're not. Able to do so, so it is October twelfth, Commissioner McDonald, um.
Okay, I, I will be in town, I, I will just be getting back, but I will be in town.
Okay, October, for October twelfth.
Yeah.
Okay, five thirty to seven, same time, same place, nothing changed, um, second Thursdays. Do we have any other comments? Questions, concerns, or feedback?
Just wanna second that motion to adjourn.
Okay, perfect. Okay, so we will end this meeting and we will adjourn at six fifty two.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
See everybody, take care, Jason.
And feel better, everyone who's sick.